Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the fifth meeting of the Marion City Council of Laurel, Maryland on Monday, March 11th. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman DeWalt?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilwoman Mills?
Here.
Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
President Cole?
Here.
Mayor Sidmore? You have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda item number three is the report of the Marion City Council. We will start tonight with Councilman DeWalt.
No report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Johnson?
Hey, good evening, everyone. My report for today, Tuesday, February 13th. I attended the African-American reading celebration at Laurel High School, was able to read to two of the classes there, kindergarten and first grade classes. On Saturday, March 2nd, I attended the rescheduled Black History Month program. It was great to see the poet laureates from Prince George's County. That was very, very interesting to me. I really appreciated that. Sunday, March 3rd, had a chance to attend a community birthday party at Selborn House for Joe Fabian. He's a 65-year-old veteran. They had a magic show. I probably enjoyed it more than they did. So I just wanted to thank Cynthia Cronin Wood for that invitation and able to attend that. And then lastly, was able to host the First Annual City Women's History Month Program on Saturday, March 9th, which was a very well-attended and great event. And thank you all for coming out to support. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Mills?
Good evening, everyone. And I wanted to start my report by sending my condolences to Sarah Green, the passing of her mom. And also, happy International Women's Month to the ladies. And on February 12th, I met with, well, myself and Kylie Clark, Councilwoman Kylie Clark, met with the developers that were have own property right at Conti and Conterra. I didn't know that that was, that part of, that partial was a part of the city, but learned something new. On February 17th, that was the beginning of Restaurant Week. Myself and my wife and myself, we went to a few, quite a few restaurants, but to name, I love to support Main Street, so those are the ones that I mentioned, Olive on Main and Acapulco. Very good eating. On February 27th, this was the Laurel Community Schools Musical Cluster. And this was a cluster of all of the elementary schools, middle schools, and Laurel High School. Their orchestra band, they all came together and performed. And that was a pretty unique piece that they did. And March 2nd, this was the Back in, no, I'm sorry, Black in Business at the Multicultural Center. And that was good. Good eating, good gifts, and had a great time. And also, the young poet that I introduced, she almost got me to tear up. I'mma put that out there. All right, for Women's Month only. She did a great job. She did a great job. And the, and I appreciate Councilwoman Kylie Clark to, you know, to keep pushing and not, you know, just because of what happened on the first time, that she endured, kept pushing, gave a great event. Thank you very much. March 8th, we had a meeting with the mayor and some of the director heads with the Laurel Boys and Girls Club, Vice President and President for Funding. Looking for annual funding for the, to help out with the facilities there. On March 11th, this today actually marks the beginning of the Holy Month of Ramadan. And just to give you a little footnote on the Holy Month of Ramadan, it is the month that the Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, received the holy Quran. Then later on, just a few, about an hour ago, I met with Ms. Sharon Lewis, who is a constituent in War II. And she wanted me to tell you, tell you, Mayor, that she voted for you, so I put that out there. All right, and she said, she was, she's the owner, and she's the founder of the Premier Thought Leaders. And she's putting together an event that'll be at the Kennedy Center. A lot of powerful individuals will be there. And she wanted me to share this with the council, and perhaps we could be a part of it when it comes to fruition. And Mr. President, this is the end of my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, good evening. So for the month of February, we as a city celebrated the contributions of African-Americans in America through our annual Black History Program on February 10th, which was unfortunately originally canceled due to a BGE power outage in the area, but I rescheduled it for March 2nd. We had an amazing time together, as you heard from Councilmember Mills. It was a pleasure to watch community members, city staff, kids, and vendors dancing, laughing, and enjoying life and celebrating diversity together. I enjoyed creating the vision and building on Mayor Sidmore's founding vision as a council member, which the council provided Mayor Sidmore with an award for not only being the first black mayor, but being the founder of our city African-American history program, Black History Program. But it wouldn't have been possible without the execution and support of our Laurel volunteers, led by Corinne, our combined city staff and police department, our talented community members who shared their artistic creations in our local black-owned businesses, which included over 35 businesses and three food trucks. So thank you. It was also an honor to visit the Laurel Elementary School for their African-American Wax Museum and reading books with the kids in their classrooms. It was the cutest thing when one of the students yelled out while I was reading, "Ms. Clark, you really are a good book reader." I was, I just started cracking up laughing. I would like to send a big thank you to the North Lake and Cromwell HOAs for allowing me to attend your meetings in February and March, speaking to the board and residents and discussing things that are happening around in the community. I also attended the BGE Constituent Resources Elected Officials Training and celebrated Veteran Joe Fabian's 65th Birthday with Councilwoman Johnson at the Selborn House. Just, oh, I also attended an amazing event held by Councilwoman Johnson celebrating Women's History Month. Thank you for that, with the lovely purple everywhere. Everyone was delighted to be there. And also stopped by Councilmember Mills' event located at the Laurel Boys and Girls Club, which I was really excited to not only get my favorite lemonade, but some food too. Just as an announcement, the Environmental Programs Department and the Environmental Affairs Committee, which I chair, will be hosting a Nomo April kickoff event on Monday, March 18th at 6:30 PM at the municipal center. You will hear from a speaker from the Audubon Society. You can pick up your Nomo April signs. And we will have local nurseries selling native plants coming to you, so you don't have to come to them. One last thing, congratulations to the Laurel High School basketball team for winning their championship game recently. We are so proud of you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I will go next. On February 20th, I met with Big City Body Art for a tour of their expanded business facility. We have a grand opening coming up there. I'm excited for the rest of council and mayor to attend to see their expanded business. It really looks fantastic inside. On the night of the 20th, I attended the HDC meeting. On February 24th, again, condolences to our clerk for the passing of her mother. I attended the funeral on behalf of the city council. On the 2nd of March, I attended the rescheduled Black History Month event, which was just as packed as the first event. March 3rd, I attended the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department Breakfast. It's a great way to see residents of the community. Everybody turns out this month, they had waffles. On March 8th, I attended the most recent play that is at Laurel Mill Playhouse called "Noises Off." If you have not been, they did a fantastic job. It's a very large play that they've been able to pull off in a very small space. My face hurt by the end of the play because I couldn't stop laughing. On March 9th, I also attended the Black, or the Women's History Month event. Another great success. Congratulations to all involved. Some legislative updates. I am working with the administration and the Economic and Community Development Director to review and update our reforestation section of the land development code. I am hoping that we will have something for council to review for the upcoming month of April. Upcoming meetings, this month, we are having the Pride Day Committee meeting tomorrow night at City Hall at 7:00 PM. And one final announcement, I was very pleased to learn at the Black History Month event that the Laurel Farmers Market will be returning on May 2nd and will be held weekly this year. So I am excited that if you couldn't remember when the Farmers Market was last year, it will be weekly this year, so every Thursday from May through October. That concludes my report, and we will move to the mayor's report. Mayor Sidmore?
I give everyone. Thank you, Council President. I appreciate that. Before I get started, I want to pay my condolences also to Mr. Sarah Green, our clerk for passing of her mother. Also want to pay our condolences to Al Burley, a lifetime member of the Laurel Volunteer Rescue Fire Squad. We'll be lowering the flag this week in honor of him for his service to our city and our respect for his family as well. February 13th, I attended also the Laurel Elementary School Reading Program. I read a book about Muhammad Ali. On February 14th, I attended a meeting of Metropolitan Washington Council Government. It's a monthly Board of Directors meetings with, made up of councilmembers from Washington DC, councilmembers from Prince George's County, Montgomery County, Northern Virginia. We talk about light interest in our region, you know, things like that. Also, a grand open, February 16th, a Bad Decision Tattoo ran up in the air. February 18th, I went to the Governor's House, a Black History Month Celebration. It was a walk-through. It was pretty interesting. I got a picture, take a picture with the governor and the first lady. It was maybe over 400 people there. I was expecting more. I thought I was expecting a program, to be honest with you, but it was a walk-through. It was good to be the governor again and the first lady as well. On February 22nd, State's Attorney, Aisha Brave Boy, I had a municipal retreat. All the regions, local governments here talk about crime initiatives here, juvenile justice reform. Those are interested here, just here at the Laurel Library. February 27th, we had a meeting with a Black History Essay Contest here from winners. Forgot their names, but they came down. I should have wrote their names down for my report. But they came down, the winners came down, and we rewarded them with a gift card of $50. I had two 7th graders and two 6th graders. February 28th, I attended Laurel Elementary School for the African-American History Event. And on February 29th through March 1st, I attended Maryland Associate Winter Conference in Annapolis, one up there. The rescheduled Black History Program, I wasn't able to attend the reschedule, but I heard it went pretty well. So once again, thank Councilwoman Clark for outstanding job. I heard you did outstanding job. And on March 7th, we had visitors from Anaronda County. As you know, a multi-service center is going to service individuals from Howard County, Anaronda County, and of course, the city of Laurel. We want a partnership with these organizations from the surrounding counties, especially the local government, help fund the building. As you know, the city of Laurel is actually taking care of the building. But so we still need assistance from other municipalities as well. So that's why we have individuals from Anaronda County came in to witness the building. They can take back their local government, all the wonderful things we have in the building, in case they have residents coming in and picking up, we can serve them as well. Women History Month Celebration, and once again, congratulations to Councilwoman Johnson. She did outstanding job. I was able to come there and a great job. You guys came in the ground rolling. I really appreciate that. And hold on, Mr. President. Mr. President, can I have a point of personal privilege to allow Chief Hamill to come on to give us a quick state of report on some things going on in our community? Getting a lot of phone calls over the weekend, lots of break-ins, things of that nature. So Chief Hamill, I want to just give a community update that we're working hard. Our police is working very hard for you, but unfortunately, though, there are some bad actors in our community. And but we still want to keep you safe, and Chief Hamill will give you updates if that's possible, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your point of privilege is granted. Chief Hamill?
All right, good morning, or afternoon, sorry about that. Just a couple of things real quick. We know we've had some concerns over the weekend in the end of last week with some thefts from autos and other suspicious activity in the community. So just as a friendly reminder on some crime prevention tips for all of us to follow. Please try to park your car in well-lit areas. If your community doesn't have a well-lit area, I want to contact your community association about that. And hopefully, they can endeavor to make that a little better for you. We recommend people do lock their cars. I know some people don't like to do that. But regardless of locking or unlocking it, please you move your valuables out of it every night. Whatever, I remember years ago, we handled a theft where they actually stole somebody's hand lotion. The freehand lotion, you get at a hotel out of somebody's car. So nothing's safe in the car if you leave it unlocked. Ask you to please report suspicious behavior to us. You know, we're out in the community. We have teams out in the community, uniform and otherwise, but we can't see everything all the time. You know your neighborhood better than we do in many cases, so I'd urge you to please contact us if you see some behavior that causes you some concern. The other side of that is also, please look out for each other. Just because it may not be in front of your house, it's in front of a neighbor's house, doesn't mean that it's not an issue. Please contact us for that as well. I urge you to, we get from people, they don't want to report if they've been a victim of a theft from their vehicle or some other activity. We really need you to report those things to us. That's how we help combat those issues. That's how we help decide how we're going to deploy in order to make a positive difference in the community. So I'd ask you to please let us know about that as well. We, for people that don't know, I'd ask you to please invite us to your community meetings. We're glad to come and talk anytime. And also, we bring gifts to a degree. We bring clubs that fit your Hyundai's and your Kia's. Because as we all know, due to a social media phenomenon, that has been the most sought-after cars for people stealing cars of late. We also have phone tags that operate on two main phone carriers' systems that we've balled ourselves through some of our relationships. And so we won't sell them to you, we'll give them to you. But please invite us to your community or stop by the station so we can help you with those as well for our Laurel residents. Finally, I do want to thank the mayor and council. Many of the events you, they mentioned in their reports, they've invited us to as a police department. And we go, we're invited, we go. And it was a pleasure over the weekend being at a number of events. And it really helps to build these trusting and lasting relationships with our community. See that we have a very supportive council. Thank you to the mayor and to the council. Questions? I'm either, there's no questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very welcome. Thank you, Chief, for your report. Once again, the community, we're aware of things that are going on. Our police are working very hard. Their job is to protect and serve us as much as possible. But unfortunately, we have some bad actors in our community that like to take people who's working very hard. But just please be vigilant. Please share your ring camera with the police department. They ask you to, because we want to bring any suspects into custody, and the prosecutor cannot prosecute them. Before I close, Mr. President, I'm going to make an announcement and a proclamation. On March 23rd, we got our Extragonza at 12 o'clock at Granville Guti Park. That's one of our biggest events here in the city for our kids. So please come out on March 23rd at Granville Guti Park at 12:00 PM. Also, proclamation, Women History Month, we'll be celebrating Women History Month all month. And once again, thank Councilwoman Johnson for kicking it off here in the city of Laurel. And so if you got any Women History events scheduled in the community, let us know. We'll try to make those events as well. The proclamations, I'm not going to read the proclamations, but I have a proclamation for Women History Month. We also have a proclamation for Good Sports Month. So if you play sports, anything, you know, always be a good sportsman, compete hard, work hard, but at the end of the game, just shake your opponent's hand, because sports is a way we develop our discipline, develop skills, we can become better persons. So sports is not going to be define us. But it's something that we want to, you know, if you're good at sports, always show good sportsmanship. And also, Ms. Helen Woods, I mean, I forgot the name, but she writes us down. Meetout Day on March 20th, you know, we want to support the Meetout Day. So I don't eat beef or pork myself, so it can be easy for me though. But if you can not eat any meat that day on March 20th, you know, for health reasons, try us one day and support this initiative of Meetout Day. So we don't have a resident proclamation for that. So with that, including my report, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to agenda item number four, committee reappointments. Mayor Sidmore, you have the floor again. Would you like to read your appointments for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Once again, reappointments are James Hester, the Eppes Commission. This term will go into effect today, March 11th, 2024, and will expire March 11th, 2027. Also, Michael McGowan to the Community Development Committee, that Community Development Authority, that appointment will start today, March 11th, 2024, and will expire March 11th, 2027. Tony Drake, Eppes Commission, once again, at the same commission, will expire 3/11/2024, excuse me, going to affect 3/11/2024, expire 3/11/2027. And also, the last appointment will be, not the last one, Dave Dove Robinson, Public Safety and Transportation. Will go into effect March 11th, 2024, and will expire March 11th, 2026. And a reappointment of one of our favorite health officers, Dr. Yoo, been working with us since the pandemic. Gives a lot of information to keep us safe during the pandemic, taking our COVID, giving us the numbers and everything. So this is something that our city is needing. He do this free, pro bono. So serving our communities. Once again, we want to appoint Dr. Yoo to our city law help officer. So I asked for the council confirmation on these appointments.
Thank you, Mayor Sidmore. Do I have a motion from the council?
I make a motion to approve the reappointments that were listed.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
I second.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda item number six is the general public hearing. We do have several speakers signed up to speak. As a reminder to speakers, you have a two-minute limit. Please state your name and address for the record. I will open the general public hearing at 6:23 PM. Madam Clerk, is Ms. Mary Stewart on the line?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm going to let her speak right now.
Welcome, Ms. Stewart. Please state your name and record for, please state your name and address for the record. Ms. Stewart, you're still on mute? Ms. Stewart, we have you now.
Do you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My apologies. So my name is Mary Stewart, and my address is 7631 East Arberry Court here in Laurel. So I have two things I want to bring up. And I'm a new homeowner in the state of Maryland. Lived in Alexandria for about 13 years. So I bought out here two years ago. And I've had a lot of concerns, but the main thing, of course, is the noise violation. I know the timeframe is between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM, if I'm not mistaken. I feel like that timeframe needs to be extended because a lot of us work from home. And so there's a lot of noise early in the evening, and also too kind of like mid-morning, that sort of thing. So that's just one of my concerns, to see if that can be changed, that timeframe can be changed. Also too, I hear a lot of, I guess, young kids or other people on these motorbikes, even in my community, and it's hard to sleep at night, especially with the weather changing, you know, towards summer. And so if that can be fixed, or at least some kind of policy or law that can handle that situation, that would be beneficial as well. And the second thing is the marijuana usage. So I know, of course, that became law in PG County in July of last year. And I don't really think the lawmakers were thinking about homeowners and how the smell of marijuana impacts those that don't smoke. And I have to deal with a lot of secondhand smoke. And so I have complained to my HOA, and there's not really much they can do about it. They just recommended I get an air purifier, but there are owners beside me that do a lot of heavy smoking, or also too, when I'm just out and about in the community, I smell the weed. And I just feel like it takes away from the beautiful presence of certain areas and kind of makes Laurel overall, PG County, look bad. But I know some will agree and some will disagree. But I'm not for marijuana. But of course, I know that can't really be changed on a on a county level, since that was already voted on and approved. But just something to think about, also to just the liquor stores, if we can have less of those. And I know that's been an issue in PG County over a number of years. And so it makes I feel like the city look bad, and also too.
Stewart, we're at the end of your, of your time limit. I want to thank you for your testimony today. The administration will be in touch with you shortly to address some of your concerns.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time today. Our next public speaker is Ms. Donna Barito. Madam Clerk, is Donna on the line?
Yes, I'm going to let her speak now.
Thank you.
Hello?
We can hear you. Please take this for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Donna Barito. I live at 7617 Lake Glen Drive in Glendale, Maryland. My zip code is 20769. I'd like to start by saying good afternoon, Mayor Sidmore, city council members, and community participants that are watching. It is my honor to be in your presence today. My name, like I said, was Dr. Donna Barito. I am a former teacher, assistant principal, teacher union representative, and currently the director of student teaching at Bowie State University. I am running for Prince George's County District 1 School Board. I hold a doctoral degree in educational leadership, a master's of arts degree in administrative management, and a bachelor of science degree in elementary education. All three degrees were gotten at Bowie State University. I am an accomplished speaker and a licensed administrator. Ladies and gentlemen, I have a passion for education and serving the community, the parents and the children. I am a proven advocate, and I'm dedicated to improving the education system here in Prince George's County. The reason I'm running for school board is because I would like to support the conditionally licensed teachers to become certified. I'd like to I'd like to increase school safety. I'd like to increase mental health services in the schools. I would like to use the arts to enhance instruction in our schools. I would like to partnership with community businesses to assist with school funding. And I'd like to pro, I am proactively addressing teacher burnout.
Thank you, Dr. Barito. You have reached the end of your two-minute limit. Your testimony has been heard by the council. We wish you good luck in your race.
And I thank you so much.
Our next speaker tonight is Ms. Erica Legon. Madam Clerk, is Erica on the line?
I believe Erica might, there's a participant ECG, so I'm going to allow that person to talk. If Erica, if that's you, if you could just confirm that for us.
Yeah, it's me. Thank you so much. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Erica Legon. Address is 8301 Ashford Boulevard, Department of A.C. in Laurel, Maryland, 20707. My name is Erica Legon and I am the founder and CEO of the E Consulting Group. And I'm here on behalf of my client, XTT Life. The founder and owner of that is Denny P. Olivera. And I'm not here to study any products or sell you anything. I'm actually here to discuss us working together with the City of Laurel on a more sustainable and healthier community and future. XTT Life has several programs that are under a green hub and that work towards sustainability and saving communities money. The first program I want to talk to you briefly about is the Fuel Cost Savings Program. It's called Bring Better for Less and it looks at two of their products that help you bring better for less if saving money. I also wanted to talk to you a little bit about the seniors for solar panels, citizens for solar programs that we actually have in XTT Life. That's something that we're looking at helping individuals in the community save money on solar panels and have different programs for that. The other program that I wanted to briefly touch on that XTT Life has is a workforce training program. And it's essentially out with the old, so turn it into new. It's turning older buses into electric vehicle conversion buses. And we have a workforce development program in the training program that we're actually working with various partners on. And our last program I want to touch on was working on our welding, women's health impact. And that's just working around product that's been proven to increase various health issues in women and women's healthcare. I'm here, like I said, on behalf of my client, who loves to work with the City of Laurel and some of various people, not only the mayor, but also various council members who are interested in our Laurel programs and our products. Thank you so much for being with the opportunity to present to us.
Thank you, Erica. We appreciate your testimony. Administration will be in touch with you in the coming weeks. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak?
No, Mr. President, that's it.
With no additional speakers, I will close the general public hearing at 6:32 P.M. Moving on to agenda item number seven, introduction and first public hearing of ordinance number 2022 and ordinance amending the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the Marion City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024 and to provide an effective date. Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed at the work session, this third amendment to FY 2024 is focused on the capital improvement program. This will, this proposal provides additional funding of $8,370,587. The projects include removing ARPA funding from Van Duzen Road and moving it to the recon, excuse me, renovations at the Laurel Multi Service Center, providing financing funding to Van Duzen Road as well as Carriage Hill Lane, Carriage Hill Drive, Eighth Street, First Street, Little Montgomery Street, Park Avenue, fleet equipment acquisition based on the city's replacement schedule, major facility maintenance, and city-owned facility HVAC system replacements. The streets were determined based on a non-destructive pavement evaluation testing by our engineers. I just want to take this time to thank Mr. Bailey and Mr. Miller, Mr. Helms for their help in putting this together. It was basically advancing the CIP due to the opportunity for the financing package. So they were tremendously helpful putting the projects together as well as our team in my office to put the document together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Director Saylor. I will open the public hearing on ordinance number 2022 at 6:35 P.M. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak on this agenda item?
No, Mr. President.
With no one signed up to speak, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number 2022 at 6:35 P.M. And I will open the floor to questions or comments from the council.
I just wanted to just reiterate from our working session this afternoon, in case someone did not attend that. As you said, Miss Saylor, that you would be willing to post the documents online on our website so that if the public would like to see how we're spending these funds, that they would be able to see that. So I do appreciate that. Thank you in advance.
Thank you. Any additional comments from council? Hearing none. This will, item will be placed on the Marion City Council meeting scheduled for March 25 at 6:00 P.M. in council chambers. Moving on to agenda item number eight, introduction and first public hearing on ordinance number 2023, Marion City Council of Laurel, Maryland Infrastructure Bonds 2024 Series AA and ordinance of the Marion City Council of Laurel, a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland, the issuer, providing for the issuance and sale of aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,400,000 of bonds of the Marion City Council of Laurel, Maryland, to be known as the Marion City Council of Laurel Infrastructure Bonds 2024 Series A or such other or additional designations as required by the Community Development Association identified herein, the bonds. To be issued and sold pursuant to the authority of Section 4-101 through 4-255 of the Housing Community Development Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended for the purpose of, one, providing all or a portion of funds necessary for the financing and/or refinancing of the following projects: facilities improvements, fleet equipment acquisition and street improvements; two, funding a portion of capital reserve fund and/or other reserves; and three, paying issuance and other costs related to the bonds, providing that the bond shall be issued upon the full faith and credit of the issuer, providing for the disbursement of the proceeds of the sale of the bonds and for the levying of annual taxes upon the assessable property within the corporate limits of the issuer for the payment of the principal and interest on the bonds as they shall respectively mature, providing for the form, tenor, denomination, maturity date, and dates and other provisions of the bonds, providing for the sale of the bonds and providing for related purposes, including, without limitation, the method of fixing the interest rate or rates to be borne by the bonds, the approval, execution, and delivery of the documents, agreements, certificates, and instruments in the making of or providing for the making of representations and covenants concerning the tax status of interest on the bonds. Again, Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city has participated in the local government infrastructure financing program in 2004, '07, '12, '16, and '17. At this time, I would recommend that we participate now in the spring issue for the projects that we discussed for ordinance 2022. This division of the, of the State Department of Housing and Community Development manages this program. There are five other jurisdictions participating with us at this time. This agency of the state has the resources and the expertise to participate in a, and issue a bond sale to sell these tax-exempt bonds on the market. We enjoy a lesser interest rate usually than you're thinking now as far as the housing rates that people are having to, to endure because of the tax-exempt nature of them, the interest they earn. Those that buy the bonds, the interest is tax-exempt. We have the programs and the projects that we want to fund with this. Excuse me. We currently have two loans with PNC Bank. We are finishing up over the next two years with the 2016 program. So on April 1, 2026, we'll make our final debt service payment on that. We have to carry a liability on the books of the value of the employee annual leave. So I have provided that to you as well. So when all is said and done, with the execution of this ordinance and the bond sale and the documents, we would have a total city debt of $13,982,433. State law limits the amount of debt that municipalities can carry to 3% of the assessable base. So using the July 1, 2023 base of $3.95 billion, we could conceivably have debt in excess of $118 million, which, you know, we would never recommend. You can have the debt, but you've also got to have the money to pay the debt service. So that being said, we're well within our debt leeway. When we paid off the 2017 LEJIF debt service, we maintained that $1,081,000 in the budget and used it then for direct payment of capital projects. So I've identified those funds which are still in the budget and we would move them back to the debt service budget for FY 2025 and beyond as necessary. And so we've already identified that funding source for the, for the new debt. The payments are made twice a year in November and May. So the timing here worked out for us to be able to get that funding to the center as well as continue with these projects. Mr. Miller informed me that the asphalt prices are really good at this time. So the street projects that we can keep moving forward rather than knowing that the state had the five other jurisdictions to participate. They like to do two a year, but it's not guaranteed. So it's best with the costs and, and the current climate to go ahead and, and do this now and advance these projects. We can, we use this money over the next three to five years. Any savings can be used on more projects. So there is that. When the bonds are issued, the funds that are our share will remain in a bank account. We'll draw them down as we need them to pay for the projects. The interest that's earned while the money is in the bank will be credited against the debt service. So it has been successful for us in the past. We work with, directly with state employees who lead us through the program, through the process. I also want to thank Ms. Anderson. We needed her to review the documents as well as the bond council for the program. So I believe that's all I've got, Mr. President, unless anyone has any additional questions.
Thank you, Director Saylor. Before we get to questions, I will open the general public hearing on ordinance number 2023 at 6:43 P.M. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mr. President.
With no one signed up to speak, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number 2023 at 6:43 P.M. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
In addition to the last one, if we could also publish these as well for the public, that would be great. Thank you in advance. And thank you to the city staff for planning this and making sure that we're, we're on budget and that we're doing what we need to do. Thank you.
Director Saylor, I would just like to say, for those that weren't watching the work session, thank you for quickly pulling together a lot of answers that were asked in that, in that meeting just an hour ago. You had a, you were able to pull that together quickly for us. It was a great presentation. I understand this much better now. And just for the record, all of these documents that have been given to council are published on the clerk's website with the meeting agenda. So I believe what Councilwoman Clark was referring to was that these documents would also be moved over to budget and finance page. Are there any further questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Ordinance number 2023 will be added to the March 25 works, or Marion City Council meeting held at the Municipal Center at 6:00 P.M. With no further business to come before the council, this meeting is adjourned.